That's Andy Carris.
Okay, alright then, good.
Ready?
Ready.
She good?
Yes.
Going to open up the workshop meeting of the City of Asbury Park Council. We're going to skip to Item B, City Managers' Report and Issues Raised at Prior Council Meetings. Special events, Lysia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application before you is requests to close Comstock Avenue between Sewell and Asbury Avenue for a birthday party. Second application is for Madison Marquette for Indian Summer.
The birthday party, it's a child's birthday.
Yes, four-year-old.
Okay, just so that goes out to TV World, thank you.
Yes. Second application is for Indian Summer to be held on September 15th. Third is the annual Free Movies on the Beach. Next is the Mind Travels Silent Concert to be held on August 20th. The Center's Annual Bike Ride on September 15th. And we have two wedding applications, one on September 15th, the other on August 3rd. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the review of the council meeting for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Resolution 270 is a special event application. Resolutions 271, 272, I'm sorry, 271, 274, and 275 are cleanups. These are grants that the city has received upwards of 10 years ago and that they've just been opened in on the books. This is the first step to actually cancel them later, but these are just technical aspects of the control. Resolution 272 is the same thing, I'm sorry, just got that one. Resolution 273 is a senior center grant that is putting it into the budget that was approved at the last meeting. Resolution 276 is another cleanup item. Resolution 277 is accepting $150,000 from Madison Marquette as per the government developer agreement for police officers. Resolution 278 is for a credit on a sewer charge. And resolution 279 is RCA award for three IT displays. Any questions on that?
And then we also added 287, which was AT&T.
Moving on to individual resolutions. 280 is payment of bills. 281 is the action plan in response to the audit, which the auditor gave at the end of the year at the last meeting. Resolution 282 is requested to be tabled by staff. Resolution 283 and 284 are purposes. This was part of the capital ordinance that was amended at the last meeting. It is for new body of more cameras and two additional radar trailers. Resolution 285 is for purposing and replacing three SUVs in the parking enforcement. This will replace three cars that are approximately seven years old in parking enforcement with new SUVs. And then 286 is authorizing AT&T access from the right-of-way, which we're basing off the already approved Horizon agreement that was done seven months ago. Any questions on individual resolutions? For introduction and ordinances tonight, there's a handicap parking ordinance, which is 2018-33, and then ordinance 2018-32 is $157,400 in what is capital surplus. This is money that, when you issue a bond, if Ms. Pelley issues a bond, this is a bond, not a note, at the, say, $1 million, you spend $900,000, that $100,000 is then canceled into what's called capital surplus. So when you become under budget, you actually have additional money to spend. So as we've been continuously cleaning up the capital accounts, there's about $250,000 named what's called capital surplus. So we're looking to appropriate $157,000 for public works equipment, IT, and items for fire police. And then we're going to ask again to table Resolution Ordinance 2018-21, which is the developer speed.
Questions?
Alright, we'll move on to matters by the City Council.
I don't have anything at this time.
Just two items. The first is, there will be movies in the park, in Springwood Park. The admission is free, it's free popcorn, and you bring your own chairs. On July 31st, we will be seeing August 14th Boss Baby and August 21st Black Panther. And the approximate start time is 8:30 when it gets dark. And on August 7th, from 5 to 8, the Asbury Park Police Department is inviting everyone to come out and celebrate National Night Out, and it's going to be located in Springwood Park. Free food, music, and giveaways, so everybody please come out.
Just briefly, Asbury Park Recreation had put on a show two weeks ago, and it was called the First Annual Fashion Show. And it was, it took a lot of work, a lot of hard work, and a lot of dedication. And I would like to just thank the council, city manager, the people that are models, the people that participated. It was a great show. We're looking forward to continue to do good in recreation, and we thank you all for coming out or participating here. And we just thank you all, and I thank you.
That's it. Michael?
Staff is requesting, we're planning ahead, we don't have anything heavy for the October, August 8th meeting, I'm sorry, so we're requesting that that meeting be canceled, because right now, there's nothing on it. We're two weeks out, we usually start opening the agenda, so we're requesting to cancel the August 8th meeting and just have the regular August 1st.
Is that required of motion?
Oh, I see.
Matters by the City Attorney.
Nothing.
Alright, we'll adjourn until 7 o'clock for the regular meeting.
Where's Vic? I know.
We'll hold him sick.
Yeah.
Okay, well, when he gets here, we'll do it.
Yeah. We have to go back in early.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We're only in adjournment, we're not closing.
Okay, thank you.
Whereas Home Drug Store was established in 1904 and has served the residents of the City of Asbury Park for over a century. And whereas its owner, Dr. Vic, and his staff continues to propound their mission statement to better serve you. And whereas the store's endeavor to better serve the community extends beyond its four walls. Dr. Vic and staff take active roles to ensure that their customers and community have opportunities to improve their health and experience total wellness through education and outreach efforts. These efforts include, but are not limited to, hosting healthy corner store events, sponsoring two bike-sharing stations for residents to have access to bicycles, to aid in improving their personal health, as well as that of the environment. Dr. Vic and his organization are active members in the Alliance for a Healthy Asbury Park, the Prevention Coalition of Monmouth County, Anti-Bullying and Anti-Substance Abuse Awareness Group, as well as contributing member of the Asbury Park Mayor's Wellness Committee. The Asbury Park Mayor and City Council acknowledge and thank Dr. Vic and Home Drug Store for the many years of their dedicated service and commitment to improving the health of Asbury Park and the lives of its residents through its support and outreach efforts. There you go.
Yeah, I just want to say, as much as is in that proclamation, it doesn't even, 10% of what Vic does for the town. Rodeo for Recreation, anything with the mayor's wellness, he's dropping off cases of water, what he provides. And he's also a very modest person, and we basically had to, he's like a Tom Pavinski. We had to convince him to come get this award, so we can never. We can never thank you enough for all you do.
Thank you, everyone.
Introduce your family.
This is my wife, Hina, this is my little daughter, Leila, and we want to all thank you. You know, home drugs is like part of our community, and Asbury Park is part of our life. And, you know, we're just looking forward to, you know, another 10 more years.
Good evening, I'm going to call the meeting for the Asbury Park City Council to order, please. I'm going to do roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection, please. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the customer, the store ledger on January 4, 2018, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, we'd like to do a presentation by the Tenants Association of the Asbury Towers to the Asbury Park Fire Department.
Check 1, 2.
Testing, testing.
It's testing, it's testing, it's on. It's on, okay, you hear me? Okay, good. Karan, you're over there. What I want to first say is, my name is Michelle Rachelson, I'm the president of the Tenants Association ATRA, the Asbury Tower Resident Association, and Karan Venigala is the pharmacist-owner of Quick Med Pharmacy. We're co-sponsors for this, and Karan is always helping us and helping along. Anyway, we're really pleased. We had a wonderful fundraiser a few weeks ago, and we're really pleased to present the Fire Department, the First Aid Squad, with $600 that we raised in five hours, and it was really wonderful. And these other people are also tenants, also helped, volunteers, hard workers. It doesn't happen alone, and we're really pleased to present. This is the second time that we're presenting the Fire Department with a donation, and we did this five years ago. And we're really pleased that this time it's a few hundred dollars more. So who gets this? Oh, you get this. I didn't see you, I'm so sorry. Whoops, if you don't mind. And what's almost funny about it is, last time, the battalion chief was there, and the entire battalion came to the building. And in the middle of the presentation, the alarm went off, all the fire trucks were in the building. And when, it was Frank Delelo, Delelo, that had that, something like this, in his hand. And that's what he left with, but he forgot to leave with the important check. So that's not happening right now. And here is the check, I'm going to give you the envelope. This is just for their wonderful, their utmost dedication to saving our life. They should actually put, I wouldn't call it an office, but I guess it's like a garage, as a satellite, like a satellite building right next to us. Because if they're not there three, four, five, sometimes six times a day and night, they're not there once a day. So we really owe our lives to the Fire Department and the First Aid Squad. Thank you so much. Okay. This is Karan Venigala, Quick Med Pharmacy. This is Anna Marie, and I can't say the last name, Cash Grenova, is that close enough? This is Karen Snow. This is Tom Charmont. I think you know Jesse. This is Terry Butida, I'm Michelle, and you know everyone else. Thank you very much.
I'm glad it is. You're really keeping so many of us alive. I truly, thank you. Thanks so much, John, thanks. Thanks all.
Alright, at this time, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
Hold it.
Anybody who wishes to speak, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please. Each member of the public has three minutes to speak.
Marty Bradshaw, 1508 Main Street. They just started doing the sidewalks on my block, between Sixth and Seventh Avenues. And I just have a question. They're making a grass strip, you know, all along the street. So you have about 18 inches of grass, and then the sidewalk. So I'm just wondering, what's the purpose of that grass strip? Because we've never had, none of the other business districts in any of the other towns have it in a business district. I think it's going to end up looking really crappy, because, you know, it's not going to be grass, it's going to be all dirt and weeds, because everybody's parks all along Main Street. They're going to be, you know, trampling all over that grass strip all day long. I just question, what's the purpose of that? Does anybody know?
Yeah, that's the state project, and Marty, it's the first time I'm hearing about it. I didn't even know that was part of the plan. So let us get in touch with our engineer, they ask the state engineer what's going on, and we'll go back to you.
Okay, and not only that, the sidewalk still has to be just as wide. I believe it's five feet wide. I guess that's all, you know, all along Main Street. And so now they've added this strip about this wide. So they took that much grass from my property. I mean, I realize, I guess that's the city right-of-way, right, so it's not really my property. But, you know, I had beautiful Zoija grass there. So they took the big bulldozer, they took this much of my grass away. And the whole, they did the same thing to the big property on the corner of Seventh and Main. He lost all that much land also. And it's all because they added that 18 inches of grass all along the street, which to me serves no, it serves no purpose. And, you know, I drove down to Manasquan today, and Bradley Beach doesn't have that. Avon doesn't have it, Belmar doesn't have it, Manasquan doesn't have it. Probably because everybody realizes it would end up looking really crappy, you know, because no, who's going to cut it? You know, all these other, I happen to have a gardener, because I have grass anyway, right? I have a gardener come, so he could do mine. But all the other businesses on Main Street, they don't have grass, it's just concrete in front of their businesses. So who's going to mow that? They're not going to have a gardener come in to, you know, to mow an 18-inch-wide swath of grass. It's going to just end up all in weeds and dirt.
Let us check into it, it's the first time I'm hearing about, because even looking further down the block, I'm going to say down by Third and everything, I don't see this grass strip being put in. So let us check into it, we'll get back to you. The engineer for this project, his name's Omar, will give you anybody and everybody, his telephone number, his mailing address, because we're not happy with what they're doing to Asbury Park as far as how they're doing this job. To me, it's abysmal at best, and this wouldn't be happening in Dillon, Allenhurst, but how they're doing things in Asbury, to me, is terrible.
Well, I've never seen a grassy strip in a business district.
Again, it's the first time I'm hearing about it.
And they did it across the street from me, too. It's the same way in front of McDonald's and 7-Eleven.
Well, how they ripped out 7-Eleven's driveway and left it with a gully there, where I banged the heck out of my fender getting in and out. I'm not happy with, it's shoddy workmanship, and, you know, they can sue me, I don't care, but it's terrible workmanship.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. My name is Dennis Quilligan, I live at 26 Pine Wood Drive in Neptune, New Jersey. I was here a number of weeks ago and brought up the idea of that the town here has a ban on amplifiers. Do you all recall me being here?
Yes, sir.
And that, you know, I brought up numerous federal court cases around the country that have said that you can't have a ban on amplifiers, that it's really a noise issue, and that a city that does have people come in play should use one of these right here. That's a DB meter, which measures sound. So a lot of cities have set up 85, 90 dBs as a limit, they can go like this, and if they're too loud, they can shut them down. That's really where the City of Asbury Park should go. Reason I'm here, I forgot to bring up a couple of issues the last time, and also want to see if there is any interest. Am I coming out here for, you know, I just beat my head against a wall? I hope not. This brings up a topic which I did touch on in my last appearance, but didn't get into it, but the federal court rulings found that banning amplifiers definitely disallows a majority of musicians and their instruments, therefore denies them First Amendment rights. And the ACLU has been very active in different towns on this issue. So I think it's important, you know, the majority of musicians don't just play acoustic. Most of them play instruments that require amplifiers. And if we can control the sound, my band is using little amplifiers like this now, and we mic them up through a battery-powered board, and we play 85, 90 dB, we can stay right there, right there. I think we could educate musicians into doing that, and have more people come out and entertain, the really good ones come out, not just the strummers, you know, have small bands and things like that. Anyway, another one is, is I personally am disabled. I have a couple of disabilities. First thing is, I was hit by a car down in Florida 20 years ago, and broke my back in two places, and I'm a chronic back pain sufferer. But I also had a hereditary disease called, I forget the name of it, but it's your staphylococcus, get a plaque on it, and it won't vibrate anymore. And it's called, I had to have a surgery called staphendectomy. And consequently, when I try to sing, I can't hear myself. So I have to have a monitor, and I have to have a speaker. Otherwise, I sing out of tune and I lose my voice. This makes it a disability issue. So you might think about the Americans with Disabilities Act aspect of this also. Thank you very much, and I hope there is interest in this.
There's definitely interest, and Michael, would you like to comment?
Our attorneys reviewing all the cases you gave, you gave copious amount of case studies.
Well, I'd like to bring these issues up also, you know, that is it, First Amendment?
Do you have an extra copy of that you can leave with us? Can you leave that with us?
Can I leave?
Yeah.
Yes, I will, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's why I'm not here.
Okay. No, leave that with us, and we'll review that also. You're not banging your head against the, yeah, we're not, you're not banging your head against the wall, we are looking into it.
Excellent, thank you very much. There's a lot of us that live around there, that are real with town, but we have to have those amps and make it happen, and eye prongs that will keep it down. The rest of them, I'll give the town. I promise you, I'll give this to you.
But thank you.
Only call 50, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, okay.
Hi, Christian Hubert, Fuller, First Avenue, Asbury Park. Two things I want to thank you guys for putting the boxes and the intersections. You know, I literally every weekend would see, almost look at the T-bone and stuff, so I also lost revenue on tickets, but it worked the first weekend, no one parked there, people get out, you know, perfectly safe, it's great. Secondly, is I came a few weeks ago to talk about the homeless issue in town, probably two months ago or so, and I said, you only observe and where these gentlemen sleep and hang out, you know, during the day. And three places I noticed that they're always hanging out. It's the Kenmoth Building, where you have that fence in front of the sandbags, it's been like that for probably four years.
Which building, I'm sorry, I missed which, which building?
The Kenmoth Building, you know, construction site over there. The YMCA Building with the scaffolding. And I noticed that these guys, you know, they realize, hey, there's construction, there's not much going on. But the thing I observed with that, the issue is that the YMCA Building has had scaffolding for how many years now? I have no idea. And that building has had the fence around it for probably at least four or five years. So the question I'm asking is that, is there any kind of law or anything in place that the city can say to develop or anything? Like, hey, let's get this project going, you can't have scaffolding for 25 years in front of your building. It's an eyesore, it looks terrible, and I noticed the homeless guys are hanging out there. They take down the mission wherever they're coming from, and they sit there all day. Second place I noticed they hang out is Library Square Park on First Avenue, between Asbury Avenue and First. And I noticed walking through, there are nice warm summer nights, that there's men sleeping throughout the park. And the problem I see in that park is that the lighting is not adequate in there. It's very antiquated, little lights, orangeish color. There's all these dark spots over that park, and from what I heard, there was a mugging in there. I'm talking to the police, they confirm that, but that's what I heard. And it's getting worse over there, and my feeling is that probably certain people are telling them, hey, go sleep and hang out over there during the day. And then they don't want to go back over there, because it's very nice in that park. And the park's become a lot beautifully because of Tom, his crew. And, you know, I just think the lighting is antiquated in there, and I think the town should start fighting back against these builders and developers who want to put scaffolding up, meaning that they're part of their building for 20 years. It's not right, I don't know if there's a long place for that, but it's just, it's an eyesore, it looks horrible. I know a lot of people unhappy with the YMCA Building in Main Street, and, you know, the fencing around certain buildings. I know a lot of ones are cooking, they just put those up a year ago, and they're waiting for permits and everything. But it's just not right that a builder can just take advantage of a town and just leave scaffolding up for as long as they please, and the lighting has to change in the park. That's my piece. Any feedback on that?
You're absolutely right about the YMCA Building. Jesus, that scaffolding's been there for years.
Is there an active construction site, they can keep the scaffolding up?
I don't think there are an active construction site.
I'll check the building, make sure that the permits are still active, but if the permit's still active, they can keep it up.
So Michael?
The lighting we looked at last year, it's a complete redo, it's going to be expensive.
If they have an active permit, but they're not actively doing work?
Doesn't matter if the permit's still active.
And we would continue granting permits? Even if they're not working?
Under the Permit Extension Act, they're automatically granted.
There's no time limit?
There's no time limit, as long as they keep.
So years? Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
There's nothing you can do to even, maybe slightly aggravate them a little bit, to get them kind of kicked under their ass? I mean, it's just, it ain't fair, we'll hold hostage, and, you know, they're leeching.
Well, at the very least, we'll look into the permit, maybe somebody from, somebody can just reach out and ask for an update on their.
And all the sandbags that they came up with, they're all broken, so the sand's pouring in the street, and guys are using those pillows. So, and I've seen that a few times now. And the lighting, just I hope that that can be done soon, because I'm afraid someone's going to get hurt there. Me at night, it's terrible, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a historic park, too, right? It has a good road.
As far as the street goes in Asbury Park, John, I wish I could just go disappear, clean it up, leave it the way it is. The bump out is terrible. I tried to get across Grand Ave from Seventh Avenue, tried to get across Main Street. 7 o'clock in the morning, quarter to 7, if I'm on time for mass. It is awful. You can't, those, that traffic coming, because you're supposed to slow it down. You've got a string of cars, you can't get across that street. The other thing is, I don't think they've ever. that street. The other thing is, I don't think they've ever given any thought to the police department after all is said and done. So the bicycle riders will have a nice little path. The police will have their job, like I can't even believe it, because how are they going to maneuver around this crazy diet street or street diet, whatever they want to call it. And the bump outs are ridiculous because when you're gonna have to do, I'm a little late to the party as far as the street thing goes, we know that. But when it comes time to plow, it's gonna be horrific. So that's my issue with the street. I wish we could just erase it and just say, leave it alone. Just, just pay what we have, make it nice. And, because we're a city, we're not Avon. We're nowhere near Avon and forget about. And our police department has to maneuver in and out. When they have to pull somebody over, where they gonna pull them over? On sidewalk? I don't know. But that's one issue. The other issue I have is, I asked for an Oprah regarding the Atlanta Park permit. Okay, that's all well and good. I asked, what was the protocol for getting a permit for whether it be for whatever reason? And my response was, or the response was, standard protocol was used. I don't know what the protocol is, so I need to be updated on that because I'm very ignorant about that. I have no idea how long it takes, if it's seven days, when do you pay the money for the use of a park or for your protest? I don't know anything about that. And it doesn't look like any of it was used when this permit was granted. I asked for receipts. It says cost to be split. I don't want to know that. I want to know, did they pay? And how much did they pay? And who paid for the police department? Split it up. I want to see the receipt. I want to see the check. Because we're taxpayers. We don't need to get hung up on this. Why should we have to pay for that? And it also looks like that this gentleman, whoever he was, Rally for Love, the date was only for 6:24. Well, I beg to differ with you. He was there a lot longer than 6:24. He was there at least a whole week. And he was hooping and hollering and the whole nine yards. So there's discrepancy there. And I just want to see who paid what. I want to see the bills and I want to see who, who got paid. Because we're paying for it. And I had one more thing.
Got it.
That's right. It had to do with the ordinance. We have an ordinance coming up. Why are we having that ordinance? I don't understand it. The, the sign ordinance. I went to Monmouth, Monmouth County Library to look it all up. I looked up my NJSA, the laws and all that stuff. There is, you're, you're addressing NJSA, Michael, maybe you can help me out on this. Forty colon fifty-five dash D, forty colon fifty-five D dash twenty-six A. There is no twenty-six A. It is not in West Law. They put it on the computer. We can't find twenty-six A. Or is what you're doing referring to?
Louise, when I said go ahead, I thought it was gonna be short. So since it is, since it is an ordinance, you'll have time to talk.
All right. I'll say it at the time of your question.
Okay. But meanwhile, anything like that, you can forward to Michael and he'll get you the answers.
Hi, Ernest McNally, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I come every two weeks and I do mention statistics and data that are out there. If you Google for FBI or law enforcement statistics, the 10 or 30 most dangerous places of 565 municipalities in New Jersey, the whole readout comes out. And of course Camden is number one, which is unfortunate, but Asbury's number two. So sometimes people say to me, well, where'd you get that data? Where'd you get that? It's FBI, law enforcement, you just Google 10 most dangerous places in New Jersey, and all the data comes up. And we're talking 2017 and 18. Now, for people to go around and say, well, crime's going down, it is going down. But you still have that 565 to First most dangerous. And it doesn't matter if crime goes down, you're still in there. That means you have a lot of crimes, serious murder, rape, whatever. Also, if you probably saw in the paper, there's signs posted all over Johnny Mac's bar and around the central business district. Hashtag F U C K McNally. I'm Mr. McNally. In the paper, it says that Michael Casey, the spokesman for the police department, says no laws are being broken and there's no investigation. Now, I'm already a victim of violent crime from 2015 unsolved, of which I became permanently handicapped from that. So now to say that something like this shouldn't be investigated? I mean, read the article. I think, you know, it's in this Thursday's coaster. And there's some other problems in there, I think, the way, the way it makes it sound that they don't know which McNally, when both McGillan and his wife have admitted to me in front of the police and everyone, that they're not taking it down. And they want it up, and they want it on their front door, and they want it on their mailbox. And they're putting it on the public bus bench, and they're putting it on the city lamp poles and traffic control devices. And the Asbury Park Police are taking it off the public place. And then Johnny Mac and bouncers, whatever, put it back up. And then when I walk by, they say things or they yell across the street, hey, F U C K McNally. So, and if I say something to the police, they then say I'm being disorderly. So that's just the way it's working. The 1500 block fire, I filed an Oprah. I have a lot of information. I don't know why. In the paper, it said, call Detective Yost and the Monmouth County Prosecutor Investigator and the Fire Marshal. And all of them refused to talk with me. I'm a neighbor. I know a lot about buildings. I know a lot about that building. And I know everyone who lived in the building. And no one will talk. The Oprah came back that I asked for too much material or, or whatever. And the Santander Building continues. Still have problems. My emails are blocked. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I wrote a letter to the city manager four weeks ago. I still didn't get an answer. Hopefully, I'm gonna get an answer soon because it's getting kind of late for my complaint. So that's one thing. The other thing is, this is what we get after we put an Oprah request in. This is ours. This is what we get for an answer. One word is, I mean, like, if you're gonna answer, answer the right way. We're taxpayers. We deserve better than that. We're all asking about the revival, as you all know. And what took place at the revival? Now, everybody said it was a hate thing that went on. I don't think so. And I think it was disgraceful. And I, I, I think we need a better explanation than when we got six lines over here. Louise got one and I got one about Bradley Park. Nobody knows the rate. Nobody knows how much they paid. And it says something like price to be decided later. What does that mean? They were there every day. There was a schedule. We have the schedule. We know they were there every day. We know what they did. You were there the first night. You know what happened. If you think it was right, it's okay. But it was wrong, what happened there. That's like Mount Feasen's in Office, in case you don't know it, what you did there. And that's a pretty serious charge. But I think you should look into what's going on in this town. Nobody gives you the correct answers. And nobody really knows what they're doing. How do you get an answer like this? All the way up on the top of the page, six lines, no explanation. Ours is this way, and theirs is this way. Come on now. Everybody's got to get together around here and work together. And if the people aren't qualified for their jobs, this is what happened when I wrote the letter to the city manager. It's because the city wasn't doing their job that this all happened to me. And I'm not gonna put up with it. And he knows what I'm talking about, I think. He's not gonna answer me, I know. But anyway, how, how long does it take to get an answer to a letter? Or a phone call? I don't care. Either way, I don't need a letter. I just need an acknowledgement that this happened and it's gotta be corrected. You can't have neighbors fighting with each other. That's what's going on here. And it's, it's, it's pitiful. It really is. People are here 20 years and they still don't know their job. And, you know, they feel secure with civil service and, and unions, and you can't fire anybody. And if you do fire them, then they sue you and get paid. And they win every case. That's gotta be corrected. They should really be in movement to get rid of civil service. If I was younger, I would do that movement, but I'm not. But somebody ought to start it because it's killing us.
Thank you.
Any answers? Am I gonna get a letter? Or a phone?
I'm not aware of what letter you sent to the city manager, so.
Well, John, I don't like to bother you. I could have called you and told you that it was four weeks. Or I could have called any one of you. But I don't want, I want the city to work right.
Okay.
For its taxpayers.
She sent a letter. She didn't ask for any comments. It was involving her and her neighbor's fence dispute. That's, it's a civil matter.
He took my fence down in the middle of the night. That's what he did. And I sent you the city. Those pictures were taken by Jerry, by the way. And it's one of the last things he did.
Well, I think the city manager said, what it is, it, it's a civil matter that you're gonna have to, like, proceed probably on your dime in court against your neighbor.
But it's not that. It's a zoning problem. That, my fence was up for 31 years. That's how long my fence has been up.
This is the first time I'm hearing anything about a fence being taken down. So I'm being caught blindsided. So I'll talk to the city manager tomorrow, and someone will get in touch with you.
There was a couple of other things too. The bushes in the front of his house that are seven feet tall. I can't pull out of my driveway. It's like his bushes are seven feet tall. And they were on the sidewalk. I mean, there's a lot of zoning problems there too. I know I could do all that. But I think you ought to correct your problems first, zoning problems.
Okay, let us look into it. Thank you. Can we talk about this tomorrow? Thank you.
Hi, Bill Stuckey. I work for Pat Pisano, 1005 Main Street, Asbury Park. Can you hear me? I wanted to talk about the block that we're developing between Third and Main Street and some pilot programs we applied for and a jobs, jobs program we're instituting. I think that for the people that have seen what's gone on there, the Dollar, the store that's going up on Third and Main, it's dramatic improvement from the mattress store that was there and the fire damage bakery. And we spent about a year and a half getting an approval and perfecting it, and another five months getting building permits. And as we started to build this project, a number of things occurred. Half of the mattress store had to be taken down. And it's just taken us about two and a half years to get this store built. One of the things we did two years ago in April was coming for you to talk about feasibility of getting a tax pilot and what that would entail, and employing people from Asbury Park to work in the store. The store is going to employ about 30 people. And I'm working with the bond to get as many applications from local residents as we can. I have collected 15 applications from people that I meet on the street in front of our office when I'm walking to the store. So I'm hopeful that a lot of local people will be employed there. I submitted the pilot applications and I emailed Michael a couple, three weeks after, and he came back and said, you know, it's not going to happen. I think that I would have liked the opportunity to talk through that. I understand that Dollar Tree's a big corporation, but I explained in the application the nuances of negotiating a lease when property taxes were this and now they're 40% higher. So, you know, I'd love, I'd love, you know, in good faith, we're doing what we said we'd do two years ago and, or two years ago in April. And I'd at least like the opportunity to talk with the council, whether it's formally being on the agenda, and potentially work through the pilot, maybe at a reduced rate for Dollar Tree and for the retail portion of the Getty Building we're putting out. Thanks for your time. And, you know, maybe Michael can reach out and talk to me and let me know how we might proceed.
Thank you.
And we voted on the Habitat pilot, didn't we?
Move it.
Second. We'll move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. Executive Session of July 11th, Workshop of July 11th, and Regular Meeting of July 11th. Have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda. Resolution 2018-270, resolution approving special vet applications. Resolution 2018-271, it's a resolution, the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special item of revenue in the 2018 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48 colon 4 dash 87, which is a chapter 15, chapter 159, which is going to be from 2018-271 all the way down to 2018-277. 271 is for hazardous discharge grant. 272 is for the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. 273 is for the multipurpose senior grant, senior center. 274 is the EDA Cyber District Grant. 275 is the North Beach Boardwalk Local Aid. 276 is the EDA Bike Way Grant. And 277 is the Redeveloper Contribution Special Police. We have Resolution 2018-278, resolution to terminate sewer account billing and cancel open charges and credit back Block 4104, Lot 10, which is 213 Fourth Avenue. And Resolution 2018-279, resolution approving award of contract for regional contribution agreement project for three RVs. Is there any resolutions anybody wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
No.
Hearing none, have a motion to approve the consent, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Individual resolutions. Resolution 2018-280, resolution approving payment of bills. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-281, resolution adopting a corrective action plan response to the recommendations contained in 2017 Report of Audit. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-282, have a motion to table, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-283, resolution authorizing the purchase of police body worn cameras. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-284, resolution authorizing the purchase of police radar trailer with cameras. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-285, resolution authorizing the purchase of three SUVs for parking enforcement. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-286, authorizing AT&T access within a right of way. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances. Introduction-